Calling the meeting to order. Roll call.
Chair Robards.
Here.
Vice Chair Fitzgerald.
Here.
Board Member Lutowski.
Here.
Board Member Newstein. Board Member Newstein.
I'm sorry. Yes, you. Oh, me? Oh, here.
Board Member Edmondson.
Present.
Board Member Hayes.
Here.
Board Member Clemmons.
Present.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good.
We made that.
Um, I would like an approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so moved. And approval of the minutes of October 12th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay, regular agenda. A public hearing of CPA 23-03 to transmit the comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal review EAI amendments to the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, policies, GOP supporting documents. This was continued from October 12th. And Denise, do you have presentation on that?
Yes, thank you Chair, members of the board. I have with me Gianni Geller, so we're here to answer any questions that you have. The item before you this evening is the evaluation and appraisal review of the comprehensive plan. It's a statute requirement that local governments every seven years review and evaluate the comprehensive plan and bring forward any amendments to make it consistent with any state statute changes that had occurred since the previous review and/or any amendments done to the comprehensive plan, as well as an opportunity to look at it in its entirety for the local government to express any future desires from a policy perspective that they would like to have. So staff has gone through that effort. You guys are well versed in all of what happened to bring us to this point today. Lots of discussions, workshops, a lot of language to look over. We're here to answer questions through that. In general, the evaluation with the comp plan, one of the things, major changes that we made to the documents themselves is that we're separating out the goals, objectives, and policies and the map series to be part of the comprehensive plan. The data and analysis that was included in the comprehensive plan is being separated out to a support document. That allows us to update it on a periodic and regular basis without having to go through the state amendment review process. So it's very helpful to us in that regard. So you, in your packet, saw the difference between what the comp plan currently is and what is being proposed. So the item that we want to focus on most this evening is the goals, objectives, and policies. We also have the comprehensive plan map series. Those are maps that are required based on the state statute. Or, in addition, we have our activity centers map included. It's not a state statute requirement, but it does accompany one of our policies, so it was important to provide that as reference. So with the goals, objectives, and policies, we do have 13 elements. There have been three new elements introduced to the comprehensive plan. The first one is the introduction and administration element, basically providing for all of those administrative items, how the comprehensive plan is organized, information regarding amendments and how to go about the amendments, and information regarding how some of the verbiage is to be interpreted. In addition, we added a new element called healthy communities. And then the third element that's new is the economic development element. So we appreciate everybody's help, as well as board input that you've provided in the past. It's culminated in the elements as you see them this evening. So in terms of the document itself, the data and analysis, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have with that part of the document. We're not going to go through it in its entirety.
Oh.
Unless you would like for us to do that. I think it, yeah, speaks for itself. Certainly if there's anything that you'd like to see more in the way of the data and analysis, you know, let us know. But the whole idea of that part of the document, again, it's being separated out to a support document, is to provide information that supports the policies that are in the comprehensive So the document, as you see, is voluminous given the 13 elements and the map series. I'm not specifically planning to go through each specific change with the document, but I would like to point out a couple of things that we have changed since you received the document. And also to note that last Thursday, November 2nd, we did have the workshop with the city council. We do have stuff that were, or items that we're still updating in the document, not from a substantive standpoint. We certainly will do that depending on the input we receive tonight, but grammatical things, adjustments with some formatting, those types of things that we, you know, do a huge look at at the end of the document before it gets transmitted, which is our next step after this evening, the December council meeting. We will be looking for transmittal of this document. It will then be sent up to the state for their review. It'll come back to us with their objections, recommendations, and comments, known as the ORC report. Following that, we'll bring it back before you to go through the adoption.
What kind of a report?
It's called an ORC for short, O R C, objections, recommendations, and comments.
Okay.
So, um, so with that, just a couple different changes from the document that you saw. And we can do this however you'd like. I can go through generally each document, or what might be easier for us is to do this kind of as a working fashion where we can go through each element if you have any questions or would like to discuss anything. That way we can pinpoint it specific to, you know, the items that you guys have.
I just want to say, you guys should be commended. This is a tremendous amount of work, and we are very grateful for all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, we appreciate all the input that we've had from you guys as well, so. In the end, it makes for the best document collaborative approach. Okay, so a couple of items to note then, and then we can go through each individual element and answer any questions you have. With the future land use element, the item, well, actually, let's do it this way. I can, I can tell you what, what the changes are when we get to that element. So first, let's go with the first element, introduction and administration element. Again, this is the new element. Are there any specific questions or any items you'd like to discuss in regards to that Yeah, so it'll have the cover sheet on it, introduction and administration element. It's the new element, wholly underlined. We didn't do the cover.
I don't have a cover.
Oh, sorry. It looks like this.
1A1.
Yeah. So up here, it'll have introduction and administration element. That's how you know the element, and then along the side, too.
I have a question.
Yes.
At the, at the very end, on part four, public participation and intergovernmental coordination, it says that notices would be sent out for, to the community and stuff via the newspaper. I do not get a newspaper. How many people get a newspaper? Is that a viable way of, you know, putting, putting this stuff out?
Yeah, so in this regard, we are required, based on state statutes, to do noticing with ads and whatnot, so the newspaper is that method.
Kind of antiquated. It's a little bit antiquated, don't you think? I mean.
It's, it's a requirement. We can't pass it.
All right.
It's the advertisement, so that's where that comes into play, but yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're utilizing a lot more of our website and, you know, other means, more modern means of communication. So, yeah, no.
So, other than a stat, a state statute, that's...
Yeah, the, the statutes require advertisements, and they're in the newspaper.
Okay.
I, you know, I do get the newspaper, but only online. And there was a statement a couple of months ago in the Palm Beach Post that said something about they would like to discontinue doing that, because they have them for every community, but they were not allowed to, so, you know, I guess people have complained.
And we use the Observer mostly, unless we have to do, you know, a, a display ad, and then we use the Palm Beach Post for that, which this, this is a display ad, so, yeah. But that definitely, Ms. Hayes, thank you, duly noted.
So, do you, I, just a, just a general question. Do you feel that people in, in Green Acres are getting the message? Is the participation in the, in the government here good, or, you know, for...
I mean, we do get phone calls, we do get some feedback. I don't know how wide spread it is, because I don't know exactly how many it's reached in, you know, I know how many have reached out to us. So, well, we, you know, just continue to try and, yeah. All the public meetings and workshops, that's where those different venues and different means of communication come, come in handy and are necessary to bring everybody involved.
I think if there were good participation, you would see more than Emily and me at the council meeting.
Right.
So, is, are there, are there community representatives that make an outreach to their community to inform them of what's going on in their city government?
I think there are some. I don't know to what extent they do that. I know some conversations I've had where they've inquired and have mentioned, you know, membership. I don't know, I mean, I don't go to all of those meetings, but, you know, the hope is that they are, you know, relaying information, you know, as best as they can.
I'm just here to bug you.
No, no, no. They're great questions, and, you know, we, we hope that's happening. Also, from a, not just a comprehensive planning standpoint, but other items that, you know, DNS Development Neighborhood Services deals with, like code enforcement, you know, items like that, code changes, things of that nature that really would possibly have some effect on, on, you know, everyone. I know that we, you know, definitely we hear from communities regarding that, especially when they're ones that they're not necessarily in favor of. So I don't know if it's more, yeah.
How are cane shutters, blah, blah, blah?
Yes, that was definitely one. Yeah. Yeah.
Have the sheriff instead of our own police force, you know, to give, if they were out there. It wasn't that, that's, that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
I don't think you can do much about it, but there is an apathy with regard to city government.
Yes.
With, you know, and there shouldn't be, because, no, you don't think so?
Not just city.
Well, no, I think, I think that if we could compare ourselves, in some way that you could, to surrounding cities or cities similar to us, and see that it was that way with everybody, then you'd say to yourself, well, look, we'll keep on trying, but if it's just us and everybody has a lot of participation around us, well, then you say we must be doing something wrong. But I can't see it, not here.
Yeah, I think the important thing is to just get the word out through different venues, and you hope that there will be an interest and they partake, but, you know, we can't require, you know, insist.
And you want to know something, it's like the old joke, where the kid never spoke a word, and this one night he says, "I hate spinach." His mother says, "Oh, my God." He said, "Well, up till now, everything's been okay."
Yeah.
Well, that's the way people are.
Right. Yeah.
I think the good news is that not that many controversial things happen. When something controversial happens, those people that are involved directly come to the meeting, you know, a zoning change, paving my road, you know, whatever, whatever it is. So we're very fortunate that the city has been running very well, and everybody is very efficient, doing a good job, so, you know.
That's what I think.
Thanks.
When there's not a lot of people in there, it must be everything's going along pretty well.
We hope, right? We, we think, and we're doing our best to, for that to happen, so. But yeah, but we definitely will continue, you know, communications and different means and, and providing those opportunities. Anything else regarding introduction and administration element? Okay. So the next element is the future land use element. I'd like to point out one change from the document that you have, and that is we are not going forward with policy 1.3.2. It was a policy that was in there from consultants that we had worked with, and it's one that we don't think is necessary.
They require engineering renew?
1.3.2.
1.3.2.
It's not in here.
Not in this, it's not in our report.
It goes 1.2.1, and then goes directly to 1.4, so it's already been taken out.
Okay. All right, good, so.
Whatever it was.
And then the other change to note from previous documents, 1.8.3, the measurement of dwelling units per acre is on a, we're recommending it to change from a net acre approach to a gross acre.
What's the difference?
The difference is, gross is you have an acre property, you do your density based on that entire acre. So if our highest category is high density is 10 units per acre, you have one acre, you, you know, 10 units is your gross density. With net, you have to, before you can calculate the land that's available to multiply the units per acre on, you have to less outroad rights of way and things of that sort. So it's just, this actually gives a little bit more development potential in terms of the way it's calculated, but it's an easier method of doing it, and it's more industry standard, too. So I think it's a win-win for everybody.
So it's giving the builder a little bit more room.
Yeah.
Right, right. You know, if, if the density per acre comes to a point something, you know, you don't get the fraction of it. So if it comes out to be 3.2 units per acre, or 3.7 units per acre, you're doing, you know, the most you can do is three units per acre. There's no rounding up or down, but we do, we don't do fraction numbers.
Denise, I have a question on 1.2.1, substandard housing. It says the housing in the original, maybe this is just not complete in here, they're doing a maintenance program to improve substandard housing. And it talks about some units in the original section, but then it ends, apparently part of it's been cut off. This is at the bottom of the first page. It says, "Housing units within the original section, blah, blah, blah," gives places, "or as should be determined in applicable housing," but it doesn't say...
So the next page...
Oh, "to lodge unique area," okay. To lodge, it's on the next page.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it carries over.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. You're welcome.
I have a question on the, on the historical significance, and what, what percentage of, of Green Acres is considered historically significant? I tried to find it near somewhere.
Yeah, no, and that would be like something that, you know, we could put in the data and analysis. I don't have a specific figure for you, and it's defined in different ways. Usually with substandard housing stock, it's by the age of the housing stock. So in the data and analysis, or what we call DNA, it does have, we put the map that's color-coded of when the housing stock was developed. So the older the housing stock, the more you typically sees, you know, an increase in substandard housing. It's older, you know, may not be maintained in the fashion that it, you know, if it was, would have a different status. So as far as a percentage of what's substandard, we know of some areas, but we don't have, and I haven't actually seen an actual full-fledged inventory of, you know, all of our housing stock and what would meet that criteria from a cumulative list standpoint. So I don't really have a specific number.
So how does someone know if they buy a property that they are buying a historical property?
Well, so we don't have, we don't have properties that are historically designated. We don't have historic districts or anything like that. So it, it becomes what the definition is to that person, right? So usually, in this, in this regard, with this objective that talks about the substandard housing and improving it, and, and also the others that go into the historical significance, it's really more around the housing stock age and the, you know, the, whether it's in a substandard state or not. Yeah, so we don't, you know, we look at some of our more significant historical structures as being those that are older. So you see that, like, in the original section and, you know, locations of where that housing stock and the year that it actually was built, more so than it being designated as any historical significance. We don't have any designated properties.
Okay, but the grant for the historical, you know, taking care of that, would, if they knew they were buying something historical, or they lived in a historical house, and they could get help with bringing it up to, you know, a, a standard of living that's not substandard, that could certainly help in the development of those under, underutilized areas.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
I like old that looks like new myself, but...
Yeah, and the policy with substandard housing, that actually is a Florida statute requirement, or required to have policy addressing such.
Well, is that, is that, that historical significance, is that under the substandard? That's, that's a different policy, isn't it?
Actually, it is, it is a different policy.
1.42, it's not the substandard.
Right. What you are doing, 1....
4.2.
1.42, yeah. That's a, right, it's a little bit different. It's treated around the same as substandard housing in terms of aging housing, and this one actually is a statute requirement as well. So, and our utilization of it, it would be the actual year of the house, and if there has, you know, there's some historical reference around it. You know, we have some in the original section, you know, from a historical standpoint of significance of what it meant to the city of Green Acres and the original settling of Green Acres and whatnot, but we don't have it as an actual official historic district.
We do have a historical society.
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
And are you familiar with that? Okay.
And it's my understanding also that if something is designated as historically significant, there are all kinds of rules from the state, et cetera, that you cannot alter the exterior, you know, it puts limitations on what you can do to the exterior of the house if it's historical.
That's just what I was going to add.
Yeah, there, there are some of those, and then usually local governments follow suit as well. If you're designating a historic district, then you usually have regulations, again, to try to keep it within that historical significant state.
Couldn't put siding on that. That was that house that I owned, they wouldn't, because it was...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get elected alone.
Moving right along.
Any other, any questions specific to future land use element? Okay, transportation element. Leave everything as you received it. Number three, transportation element.
Thank you. Looks like this. It's number three.
You know, again, the items that are underlined are new language that's being proposed to be added, and the strike through is to be deleted.
I like the example of 1.3.10 of Jog and Forest Hill, and lack of giddy nodding that in the morning. I just wonder how, how those lights are timed, because, holy mackerel, I get up there and there's nobody ahead of me, but I can't get there.
Yeah. Council mentioned the whole timing of the lights, and if there's anything you can do from a coordination standpoint, because of course, we don't control the signalization, but certainly any time that we have opportunities to bring that forward is, you know, something that we desire to change, we definitely will. Okay. So then moving on to the next element, number four, which is the housing element. This element, we, let me just, my notes, we had, it's one thing to note, under the, at the end, under one of the notes, the first note, we do have the definition of attainable housing and the HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development, calculated Palm Beach County area median income there, and then we have the percentages listed, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Other than that, you know, there are several policies that were added and some changes. Any specific questions to the housing element?
Is this where they talk about the cluster homes? Or what are they, what do they call it?
I mean, we have the planned unit developments that allow for clustering.
Cluster homes? Because I looked that up, and all I could think of is Chicago tenements. That's all I could think of. But the pictures that I saw, you know, looking at Google, and examples of it show high-rise, high-density, little, I mean, it looked like, kind of looked like Gaza Strip to me.
Right, you don't go more than three stories.
Right, so, yeah, so we're limited by height and number of stories, but the concept of it really is to optimize your open space instead of having like little postage stamps. It's, you know, putting that as a aggregate, larger open space, and then clustering or putting all of your development, you know, in a more concentrated section. Yeah.
I have a question about the mobile home zoning. As I understand it, the mobile home park lands are owned by an overseer-type management company, and so the, you may own your mobile home, but you rent the spot that it's on.
Sometimes, right.
So if, I'm just thinking about the people that live there. If the owner decides to repurpose that land...
And they do.
You could be, yeah, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. Some mobile home parks are a single ownership of the land, and then they lease or rent all the spots, and they may, the owner may, not the landowner, but the, those who are renting or leasing those spots could own their own mobile home.
Yes.
But, mm-hmm, yeah, and we actually...
That happens.
We have that within the city.
Yeah. Okay, just, I just...
And mobile homes are, they have their own state statute provisions, so even like with building code and permitting and stuff, we have limitations on what we can do. It's superseded from the state.
Would that be considered affordable housing or not?
Usually, yes.
Definitely, depending on what the park is.
Yes.
Um, are we active in the Community Development Block Grant Program?
Mm-hmm.
We are? Okay, so we...
Well, we participate in it. We have an ability for it. It depends where the need is, and then you go through the process to apply and, and get those funds.
Okay, so...
But we definitely are...
Do that, or the, or the residents do that?
The city, and it's a program that also is through the Palm Beach County, so those, they distribute the block grant funds. Okay. Okay, anything else with housing element? Or, yeah, okay. Number five, utilities element. This element previously was known as the infrastructure element. We retitled it to meet a little bit more of its purpose and content. There's been some new objectives that were included. We highlighted a few things regarding floodplain management and the like, some of the water supply planning efforts as well, and a few other items. Any specific questions for the utility element? The utilities element includes sanitary sewer, solid waste, stormwater, potable water, natural groundwater, aquifer recharge. So they have those sub-elements.
But then again, this is complicated, because, for instance, if you're talking about drainage, the canals are not owned by us. if you're talking about drainage, the canals are not owned by us. The canals are owned by South Water, South County Water District, whatever it is.
Yeah, our Lakewood Drainage District and, mm-hmm. Right.
So we, even though that's an item here, we have no power over it really.
Right. So the, in situations like that, the same with some transportation.
Yeah.
It's important to collaborate, coordinate, you know, keep up with, you know, what's going on and having our voice as a city heard with items that they're dealing with.
Yeah.
What percentage of Green Acres is dealing with septic tanks? Is that a large portion of our?
No.
No, just the small?
Yeah, and it's the original section mostly and some areas around like military and, yeah, the older sections.
And are now going down Swain Boulevard with pipes.
Septic to sewer project.
And I got to, I live on there and I gotta mention that they did a very good job not trapping us in and.
Oh, good.
You know, we were all concerned about that, but they did fabulous job.
We used to say when we had septic tanks that we were anally retentive.
Yeah, well, we're still in septic, but they're putting the pipes in the street right now.
It's a, it's a large effort, a lot of, you know, funding and, yes, and I believe, Janie and I were just speaking of that, Janet, we think some CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds passed were utilized for some of that, if not the design, but also the construction. Yeah. That's where some of those funds come in to play for infrastructure. Anything else regarding the utilities element? Okay, the next element is the conservation element. Any comments, thoughts? We added policies, well, new objectives and policies, largely dealing with green infrastructure and the like. Any questions?
I have one. Okay, 1.61 talks about an amnesty day for disposal of commercial hazardous and special weights. Do we do that here?
So DEP in Palm Beach County do an amnesty day and so, yeah, in the past we have, from a communication standpoint and, you know, let it be known and whatnot, I think it's important and we should continue those efforts. So, yeah.
Cause when I, when I call the garbage, they have no, you know, I call the garbage collection, they have no idea what I can do with what, you know, and TVs are, you know, there's no place to put a lot of the stuff that contains hazardous.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And there's times when you have to actually take it to the, the.
Forty-Fifth Street.
Or Lantana in ninety-five, the hazardous. Yes, yep. So on amnesty days, it allows you to do that and I believe they also, there's not a charge certain situations, so I think.
But on amnesty days, you can just go up to Forty-Fifth, at least it used to be, we could go up to Forty-Fifth Street and dump the trash.
And drop it off, yep, paint, things of that sort. Actually, they recycle the paint, they utilize it for.
You could do it in Lantana too and that's very convenient. The only thing that I haven't seen in here that I would like to see that I know a lot of other municipalities seem to do, I would love to have a municipal shredding day.
Okay.
You know, where there's a shredder that comes.
Yeah, we don't have a municipal.
We have it at, in holy name, you can go there.
Yeah.
You know what we can do? So that's an operational thing, city operational thing and, yeah, I'll look into that and see what we might be able to do and, yeah.
Maybe if we did something like that here, it would bring out more people who might even see the City Hall.
Yeah, I'm sure there are people who live in Green Acres that have never seen the City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and this, you know, and maybe serve cookies, cookies and milk or something.
Yeah, my feeling always was if you wanna get people to my, to a meeting.
Food.
You can have something with shredded coconut.
Especially dessert, even better.
Yeah. But anyway, I just, when I saw confirmation, I just kinda threw that out.
Okay, yeah, from a, yeah, absolutely. We'll kinda pass it along and see if there's something we can incorporate as a city operation.
Is this where they talked about the recycling? Okay. Do we know that our recycling that we put in goes to a recycling facility?
Don't bet on it.
I don't think it does. I, I mean, I would like to know that we are paying for something that goes to what we are separating our garbage for and that it's going to the proper place. My brother followed the garbage truck right to, or the recycle truck right to the dump once. Mm-huh, so.
I believe in our contract, it's supposed to, so, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that from an operations standpoint and get back to you.
Probably not, because most, most of the recycled stuff doesn't get recycled.
I can tell you the paint.
It gets separated and.
That's what they told me, I mean, I didn't see them do it.
I hope that's not the case.
The paint goes to Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office graffiti unit and that's what they give over graffiti.
What about daily? What about daily? That's hazardous, you know? So the paint is hazardous, right?
Yeah.
That's a special collection, but the daily things that we do.
The plastic.
Like the plastics and the newspaper.
The paper, the plastic, yeah.
It's supposed to be.
Just a question that came off one of our.
We can provide those comments to our Public Works Department and see if they have any more thoughts on that or look into it, get back to you on that.
The plastic is different kinds of plastic.
Right.
Yes.
And so we all throw our plastic into the, where the plastic goes. We don't separate that plastic from the other kind of.
But someone does.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Maybe they do.
Well.
We don't know that.
Well.
And because that's very time consuming.
Let's not start any conspiracy theories here.
Yeah, but that, I mean, I don't know.
I'm not a conspiracy theorist.
Well, we were, we, excuse me, we will inquire about that to see if, you know, there's a, but, yeah, from a contractual standpoint, that's why it's supposed to be separated out and that's what's supposed to happen with it, so we can see if they have any knowledge that indeed leads to something contrary to that.
There also seems to be an issue periodically with bulk items.
Yeah.
That end up sitting around in areas and not being picked up. Couches, chairs, and I.
Do they have a regular pickup day? Like we have Thursday, they pick up big stuff.
Yeah, we have Monday.
Yeah, we have Monday.
We have Wednesday and on Thursday, yes.
Oh, so it's not, we can provide that input to Public Works for them to look into that too. You know, why it was missed or what's going on especially. Do you see it on a regular basis or is it then more hit or miss?
It's a weekly basis, believe me.
Okay, well, definitely.
On my lane. But it's the areas, it may not be single-family homes. It may be, because I live in a townhome area and there's items put out on different lanes and so the truck makes it to some lanes, but not to others. It's not, and I have to say it's not user-friendly, the actual area, you know. There's, it has a little thing, like say Thirty-Fifth Lane, okay, I happen to know that particular lane, has two areas of bulk pickup, because it has two areas of pickup and sometimes they come and hit the first one, take everything away and the second one doesn't get that. Or, you know, people, it just, and also because I live in an area where you have various townhomes, but in order to get the bulk items to the pickup is, you have to hire someone to help you. So it doesn't always work in certain situations only, not in all.
We'll relay that to Public Works.
Again, it's complicated because some of the streets are unincorporated West Palm Beach and some are Green Acres. For instance, Sedella and I walked down Dodd Road beyond the library and we've seen couches there for, you know, weeks before they picked them up. And so the question is, is Dodd Road Green Acres, is Dodd Road, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, also when we see something like that, please let us know cause code enforcement can, can, you know, get to it as well. But, yeah, we'll definitely note this and see if there's something that can be done operational-wise.
Meanwhile, I must say our garbage man are very, very nice.
Yes, I know the same and, yeah, they're very nice.
Yeah, very lovely.
It may not be, as Emily said, Green Acres. It may be the county and now we don't have any control of when the county's gonna come and pick up the bulk stuff, do we? No.
Yeah, I mean, they, I live in unincorporated county, but they, we have days the same as Green Acres. It's all, everybody handles it the same. It's just what day is for what type of pickup. So if it's being missed and not done, then we, with the city, would like to know that because we have a contract and it's supposed to be done a certain way. So that's important and the same with the county. So regardless of where it is, the harder items are when people just dump something on the side of the road and it's not part of, you know. So we get, yeah.
Big, big vegetation. Can be, again, on Dodd Road, we passed, also on Sherwood Forest.
Oh, yeah.
That's terrible.
Yeah, so in instances like that, you know, our code enforcement looks and tries to do what they can. They've called the county, they worked to try to get, you know, that pickup and sometimes even our Public Works is a courtesy, will do it so that it's not, you know, sitting like, I had that happen on Jog Road, it's something I'm like, you know, called code, Candy with the code and she called Public Works. It was on, you know, a county road, but we're like, it's a reflection of the city. People don't necessarily know that it's, you know, the county's responsibility for that road. They're thinking it's, you know, the city, you're in the city, it's, they relate it to the city. So we like to have those kind of items cleaned up and stuff. So thank you for that input and we will definitely have a, you know, pass that along to Public Works as well. Anything else in the conservation element? The next element is the recreation and open space element. The main item here I'd like to point out is it does include the policy for the master parks plan. So, you know, the creation of a parks master plan and it has other associated policies added to the element for that as well. Any questions or comments regarding the rec and open space element? Okay. The next element is the capital improvements element. This element has not much change to it. It's, thank you, Janie. It specifically deals with our improvement plan and, you know, through the budget cycle, we do put forward the capital improvement schedule that shows not only current year that's budgeted, but the outlying year. So it's, you know, to plan for those infrastructure improvements. So not much has been changed with the capital improvement element. Do you have any questions or comments regarding it? Okay, oh.
New high school.
Mm-hmm, Garcia High School, no. Children, some, some there, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, very, very badly.
Yes, that's not, it's awful.
Because Green Acres kids go to what, five different high schools?
Yes, well, or.
At least four.
Is it high schools, five different, yeah, I think it is.
Well, they go to.
Four, yeah, that's the fifth, actually, yeah, that would be the fifth.
You know, it's.
I know, not ideal.
Before we get me started, Palm Beach County School District is one of the biggest school districts in the country. Too big, too big, I mean. Keep my mouth shut.
Anything else regarding ICE or, or, excuse me, capital improvement element?
No.
The next element is the intergovernmental coordination element. We call it ICE. Here, there's been some language included and it's specifically regarding the interlocal agreement with the school board of Palm Beach County. And it just pretty much references, we used to have school concurrency. That changed through state statute, now it's coordinated school planning. So these policies are new objective and policies under 2.1 all speak to the coordination with the, our schools. There any questions regarding intergovernmental coordination?
And I do believe that the city council has started a, an education group that's going.
Yes, a committee, the education committee.
To address some of the issues going on and it made up of people who have children in the schools or kids, you know, some of the kids in the school, not just interested parties, but people who actually are involved.
Mm-hmm, that would be advocates for, mm-hmm. Okay, the next element is the annexation element. Any comments or questions regarding this element? A few changes there.
Well, I'm personally for one who would like to have the city, what can I say, this squarer. And by that I mean not less hip, but more even, you know, if we, yeah, you know what I mean.
Yes, squaring off our boundaries, we use that term all the time.
Unbelievable ziggy zag.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, us too and that's something that we're actually pursuing. We have a few annexations now that are being looked at and.
Yeah.
That you'll see.
Especially that hole in the donut there.
Right. Yeah, we do have some enclaves, those are called enclaves where they're wholly surrounded municipality. State statutes do have rules as far as what you can annex. Some of those have some challenges with us. So we, you know, we're looking at all of them, but in any instance that we can, where we can square off or make our boundaries a little bit more defined, we absolutely are doing that. Anything else regarding annexation?
No.
Okay. Next, property rights element. There were no changes to this element. It is a state statute requirement and language reflects and is consistent with that statute. Next element is number 12, healthy communities. This is a new element. So you see all of that new language there and the focus of it. Any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, and then the last element is the economic development element. Again, a new element with its associated goals, objectives and policies. Any comments or questions regarding the new language? Okay, and as you all are aware, we have our economic development director and we're, Gigi, and she's proceeding with different programs and whatnot. So a lot of this too will go hand in hand with implementing it through our, our actual city operations. And then the last item, we have the map series maps. Again, these are maps that are required based on state statute or those that are referenced in our goals, objectives and policies, namely the activity map. You will see these a little bit different. When it comes back, we're working on them a little more so they're a little bit more clear and zoomed in more. For instance, like the long-range level of service map, you know, we want it to be a little bit more pronounced. But all now substance-wise and what they represent will not change. Any questions regarding the maps? Pardon me?
I'm confused about the Green Acres roads.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks, jog roads run through us. Is part of jog road our responsibility?
No. No, it's a, it's county road.
County road, so we don't have to worry. Tenth Avenue is our responsibility?
No.
Tenth Avenue is, okay.
Is, yeah.
And you don't have numbers to do.
We have all the transportation people and try and get the lights in order so that, you know, you can drive.
The signalization timed.
Yes, thank you. We tried that over, by Buttonwood coming out of jog, Tenth Avenue, Sherwood Forest Boulevard, because in the season, you can't, it's hard to get out. Same thing with the other Buttonwood and the development across the street. You don't get very far.
I mean, we, we communicate and we let it be known, we can. But it is up to, yeah, the county and they have certain rules as far as how they time them. they time them and how they can be calibrated and whatnot, but.
We've been pleading to get a, a, a street light at Chickasaw.
Hmm, yeah.
In front of Aldi, before Aldi was built, we petitioned the county several times. Bottom line was you, there weren't enough accidents in that spot. So really, seriously, so you have to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't meet their criteria.
Yeah.
Well, maybe when the church gets a lit, it'll be lighter.
Hold your breath, Joan. No, that's not.
It is cleaned up.
Yes, we, we are, yep, we've been working with them.
This is wonderful, a lot of hard work. Do we have further business or is this a?
So the business with this, this is a transmittal hearing, so we do need to open it up to public comment. And actually, I.
Any public comment from the audience, comments for accepting this report?
Can I make that motion, we accept?
So now you just, wanna make sure it's clear that you open it up to the public for a public hearing.
Nobody is here.
No comment, so you can close the public hearing and come back to the board for a action on this item. It requires a recommendation from the, the ZBA to the city council.
I would like to call for a vote on.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan.
Year.
I second that.
It's, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moving, I love that.
So just note that it passed unanimously.
Yes, it's passed unanimously and we commend the county for doing, or the city for doing a fabulous job on this. It represents a lot of work and we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I think separating out the maps was great.
Was a great idea.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Good.
Any further discussion items?
Next meeting?
Next meeting, we will have.
Will we have a next meeting?
Yes.
When?
December.
So we will have a meeting in December and that date specifically is December 14th.
December 14th, all right.
Is that?
I don't think I'm gonna be here, but I don't know yet.
Well, I believe we'll, I'm trying, I'll see, I'm trying to think what items we have that we know, can you give us a hint?
Another car wash.
Well, we have our development review committee. It's contingent upon some going forward. Trying to think in my head and anticipate if it, development review committee, they'll be able to get, they may not be able to, so we may not have to have a meeting, we may not have a meeting in December.
I heard that.
Is there a deadline for this? When would that be?
So we.
Or is it by the year?
Prior to it, to, in this regard, it would be a private application, site plan that we have that we know that's coming through and a couple others. The others aren't, aren't near coming to you yet. They have to go to Development Review Committee, DRC. So that meeting is taking place next Thursday. So they would have to have everything done by the end of the month, so.
So it may not be till.
Depending on, right. The likelihood is that they would have to wait to go. They probably won't be ready in time to come before the board, so. As we have our public, it would be a public hearing, so we have advertisement requirements has to be advertised at least 10 days prior, so our due date to get everything complete or have it complete to be able to go forward to you guys would be prior to that. Pardon me?
That's the mandate, 10 days?
That's the advertisement requirement, 10 days in advance of the meeting.
Okay, hearing, no further discussion. I move for adjournment. And thank you very much, everybody, have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes, enjoy your Thanksgiving, absolutely.